Good morning, everyone. Apologies for the late start. I promise I'll make up the five minutes if council cooperates. I call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our National Anthem. Okay, any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Long, all in favor? That is carried. Item 3.0, Corrections or Amendments to the April 22, 2015 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes. Counselor Schuler first.
Yes, on item 5.0, and just give me one moment to get there. It indicates that Mayor McLean declared community interest for items 5.1 and 2. Mayor McLean called Deputy Mayor Long, it should be Deputy Mayor Schuler, to the chair.
Indeed it should, yeah. That was...
That was, yeah. Have that changed?
Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems even when I'm on holidays, I still get the job of being the grammar guru for our minutes. The April 22 meeting minutes, 6.0, the second line reads "the program it includes," and I believe the word "it" should be excluded. Line, item 8.3, on the fourth line, it says "the unique features of the planet," as opposed to "the unique features of the plant." Our planet is unique, but not in this regard. 10.1, second paragraph, third line from the bottom, it says "engineering were satisfied," and that ought to read "engineering was satisfied." And 12.2, it reads "which Mr. Elliott will submit those," and one of the words "those" or "which" needs to be deleted. And finally, 6 point, pardon me, 12.6, in Counselor Fredrickson's Items of Attendance, the word "coalition" is spelt incorrectly. There ends my grammar lesson for the day.
Anything further? Counselor Long.
Thank you. Just under my counsel report, and I realize I was not in the best shape when I delivered it, but if we can clarify the conference I attended, and just as I attended a conference a few weeks back, it was in fact the Economic Development Conference in Caninasus, and it was just early April for the date, so it would give a bit more clarification.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. The April 22, 2015 Public Hearing Minutes for Bylaw 2015-3D, any corrections or amendments there? April 22, 2015 Public Hearing Minutes for Bylaw 2015-4D, any corrections or amendments there? Good. So, could I get a motion to adopt the April 22, 2015 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes as corrected? Counselor Schuler, all in favor? That is carried. And on the motion to adopt April 22, 2015 Public Hearing Minutes for Bylaw 2015-3D, that's Counselor Wheeler. We'll spread it around. All in favor? That is carried. The April 22, 2015 Public Hearing Minutes for Bylaw 2015-4D, Counselor Wheeler again. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So, we will move on to item 5.0, the Community Spotlight. Jeanne Tuleski, Program Coordinator, here to talk about Health and Fitness Week.
So, I'm just here to tell you guys about all the exciting things that we have planned for our Health and Fitness Week. So, for those of you guys who don't know, National Health and Fitness Day is on June 6, and...
Okay. And Parks and Recreation Month is the whole month of June, so we thought we would just make an entire week promoting health and fitness along with parks and recreation. So, you guys keep your eyes open for posters like this around town. We've come up with a whole variety of events for all ages. We really want to promote healthy lifestyles in our community in a fun way, so we think this will be a good way of getting people out during the week. So, we have events for every day of the week, from Saturday, June 6 to Saturday, June 13. They include free yoga, free use of the courts at Total Works Fitness Center, promoting people to get out to the Arc Bark Park with their dogs with the bag of treats kind of a thing, open houses at the Derek Boxing Club, the Jiu-Jitsu Club. ECDC is holding a little bit of a bike safety course in tune with the week as well. So, a whole variety of things for people of all ages to get out, be healthy, get active, that sort of a thing. One of the highlights is on Saturday, June 13. I don't know if we have any people from Saskatchewan here originally, and if we do, maybe. What? And are you a football fan?
Of course.
If you didn't believe green, I'd be glaring at you. So, Saturday, June 13, we have a guest coming in. Her name is Georgette Reed, and not that she's following in her father's footsteps, but his name is George Reed, and he's a really accomplished CFL player for the Saskatchewan Rough Riders. But Georgette Reed is actually a former Olympian. She now trains with the firefighters in Edmonton and has a whole list of credentials for health and fitness and is a motivational speaker. So, she's actually coming out on Saturday, June 13 to do a little workshop with us at the Total Works Fitness Center where she will start off kind of inspiring and motivating the participants, and then she's actually going to take you into the gym, show you how to use the equipment, what muscles it works out, and that's kind of a thing. So, we're really hoping to get some people out, especially for that event, since she is coming from Edmonton and has such a great background and can definitely share a lot of her knowledge with us. And all of our events throughout the week are either free or at a very low cost. I know the pool is doing two-for-one aqua size. The walking track is going to be open, so again, just a lot of cool variety of events to get everybody out and active and celebrating Health and Fitness Week.
Excellent. Any questions, comments from council? Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. For the Olympian coming out, do they need to preregister?
They do need to preregister. Yeah, and they can do that by emailing or calling me, and again, that's also a free workshop as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, she will show me how not to hurt myself on machines?
No guarantees, but she will try her best, yeah.
Results not guaranteed. I get that. Anything further? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right. I now have three proclamations to read, and then we will get to the delegations some... First proclamation is for National Health and Fitness Day. Whereas the Parliament of Canada wishes to increase awareness among Canadians of the significant benefits of physical activity and to encourage Canadians to increase their level of physical activity and their participation in recreational sports and fitness activities. And whereas it is in Canada's interest to improve the health of all Canadians and to reduce the burden of illness on Canadian families and on the Canadian healthcare system. Whereas many local governments in Canada have public facilities to promote the health and fitness of their citizens. And whereas the Government of Canada wishes to encourage local governments to facilitate Canadians' participation in healthy physical activities. Whereas the Government of Canada wishes to encourage the country's local governments, non-government organizations, the private sector, and all Canadians to recognize the first Saturday in June as National Health and Fitness Day and to mark the day with local events and initiatives celebrating and promoting the importance and use of local health, recreational sports, and fitness facilities. Whereas Canada's mountains, oceans, lakes, forests, parks, and wilderness also offer recreational and fitness opportunities. Whereas Canadian Environment Week is observed throughout the country in early June, and walking and cycling are great ways to reduce vehicle population and improve physical fitness. Whereas declaring the first Saturday in June to be National Health and Fitness Day will further encourage Canadians to participate in physical activities and contribute to their own health and well-being. Now therefore, I, Glen McLean, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim Saturday, June 6, 2015, as National Health and Fitness Day in the Town of Drayton Valley. There'll be a prize for shortest proclamation one day. Next proclamation will be National Public Works Week. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health and safety and well-being of the people of the Town of Drayton Valley. Whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from provincial and local government and private sector who are responsible for and who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, public buildings, structures, and facilities, and who deliver solid waste services which are essential to serve our community. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the community to gain knowledge of and maintain an interest and understanding of the importance of public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Glen McLean, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim May 17 through 23, 2015, as National Public Works Week in the Town of Drayton Valley, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials and employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And finally, we have a proclamation for Hearing and Speech Month, which is the month of May 2015. Whereas the ALCS of Canada boast a long and proud history of advocating for early hearing detection and continue to pursue ways to assist in screening and intervention services for all children born in Canada. Whereas newborn hearing screening and early access to intervention services are vitally important to effective treatment and development of language and speech. Whereas assistance is needed to coordinate early hearing detection and intervention programs in Canada through consultation and partnerships with qualified professionals in the area of hearing and speech impairment. And whereas the ALCS endorse May as Hearing and Speech Month in Canada and have designated the first Saturday in May as Public Information Day. Now therefore, I, Glen McLean, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, to hereby proclaim May 2015 as Hearing and Speech Month, and Saturday, May 20, 2015, shall be known as Public Information Day in the Town of Drayton Valley. And that concludes our proclamations this morning. Under delegations, Sarah, I know you had sent me a message regarding the policing report, so Staff Sergeant Calhoun is here, and you're prepared to do your policing report?
Yeah. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Let's move that up a little bit. So, first of all, a few things with our new system that we have, and I'll just kind of explain, there has been some late submissions of some of the policing reports. It's just due to the fact that I'm still trying to figure out the best way to extract the numbers for you so that you guys have the most up-to-date stuff. One of the problems with it is before we used to get things just sent to us, we could forward it, and there was no issue. Now, I've got to actually extract what I need in order to present at the council. So, still working on the bugs, but we'll hopefully have it all set up. So, you have in front of you in paper copy the April numbers. You should have already in your agenda the March numbers. I'm going to start with the March numbers in particular. So, the first page I'm looking at is the statistical comparison of January to March from 2011 to 2015. And mainly, I'm going to be pulling up the highlights in the 2015 area that I've seen for the most part, one of them being is the criminal harassment numbers. It was an upward trend from last year from one now to four, but I did try and pull up those numbers, and nothing came up in our system, so I'm not sure where that number came from. So, I'll keep moving down. The mischief to property one, for the April, or excuse me, for the March numbers, there's an upwards trend from last year of 2014 for 63 to 71. When I did some looking into that number, 13 of those were unfounded complaints, and when there's a complaint of mischief to property, it just doesn't mean that someone wrecked something with property. It could be also the obstruction or of the use or enjoyment of property. So, it could be ranging from someone blocking someone's path heading into their property or any other number of things. So, that's why, you know, sometimes you have to look at the numbers that are there and kind of take it with a bit of grain of salt, where there's also some other complaints that are not necessarily actual mischief to property, but more, it does cover the actual charge category, but it's not damage to property, I guess would be the right word to say it. So, the rest of them seem to be all minor damage. There wasn't anything that was major that was listed in this month, but again, still we're looking into a number of those. One thing above it, the arson count, when I looked at that one in particular, because, you know, we'd hate to see any arson for March, is fence inserts in a fence line. It looks like we believe it to be some youths that were lighting them, so that's what the context of that particular incident was. Moving forward through the March stats, most of the numbers are fairly pedestrian, although I did want to look at, if you go into the statistical comparison of the actual month of March from 2011 to 2015, our numbers in that actual month are down. From previous years, we had 18, 31, 22, 21, we're now at 13 for the month. So, there is a decrease in those numbers as a result. The only other thing I wanted to point out for March was under the Common Police Activities, which was, we had a total count of false alarm calls of 22 in March. And lastly, there is a statistical sheet, the last page of the report for March, that goes into whether or not there's actual, whether the call volume is within norm or not. There's one red flagged as an issue, that would be under disposal abuse. Again, the numbers there reflect an increase of last year from 33 to 47 counts. So, that is concerning for the month of the 11 calls we got, and again, 47 counts is for the entire year. For the month, six of those 11 calls went to charge, and the other ones were deemed to be unfounded, either there wasn't enough evidence to proceed, or else it actually wasn't an assault whatsoever, as like a verbal fight or something. So, again, reading into the numbers sometimes helps, because usually when we get these types of numbers, they are an amalgamation of everything that's come in, and so I have to kind of dive in and see what's what to give you a more accurate reflection of what you're seeing today. I guess for March, before I move on to April, is there any questions in that area?
No, looks like we're all right.
Okay. Moving on. For the April stats, which you have in front of you in paper format, first of all, I'd like to look at the January to April, 2011 to 2015 comparison. If you notice under the assault categories, and this is again for the year, we're actually looking at a downward trend now versus the month of March. So, we are looking at a downward trend in that assault category as well. And the property crime being something that I've spoken to, I've spoken to council about with regards to that being one of our initiatives for the year, I'm pleased to say that pretty much across the board, we're seeing a downward trend in theft of motor vehicle, theft under, in that area. So, I attribute that to a number of the initiatives that we have going on, whether it's the prolific offender checks that we're doing, that type of thing. So, we are starting to see some numbers now that are reflecting the efforts that we're This one, if you go to page two of the April stats, under Common Police Activities, I just wanted to point out that we're seeing an upward trend again for the year of false alarms. We're sitting at 87 for the year in the first four months. So, it is, again, something that we need to keep aware of as well, and I know that I've brought this up to council before in the past about it. So, if we go to the statistical comparison, April 2011 to 2015, one particular one that I'd like to focus on and explain a little bit more, we're seeing an upward trend in charges with regards to drug trafficking. This past month, the Drayton Valley detachment, with the assistance of our GIS unit and the various sections that we brought in to assist, we completed a street-level operation in the town, which saw us basically charging quite a number, I think there's about seven or eight persons that are being charged with trafficking of drugs in the town. So, again, these are people that we've charged for actual trafficking where there's been buys made and...
So, sorry to interrupt. Where the number for 2015 shows...
Three.
Three.
Right.
Is that three incidents?
No, what we're doing here is I have more that are expected that aren't reflected on this report. So, that's again why I wanted to clarify that number in particular. We are going to see more in that category. So, I just wanted to let the council know it was a very successful operation. And again, our fight against the drug situation that we have in town, you know, after that, there was, you know, quite a significant impact on it, so we're still working towards the street-level dealers and trying to move up the chain with that as well. So, we're working on it.
Very good.
The only other thing that I would say again, for the month, we had 21 false alarms in that time period. And again, if you go to the last page of the package, where it goes to our trends, you can notice here that everything now is starting to be within norm, but if you look at all of our theft categories, most, if not all of them, again, are on a downward trend, which is, again, reflective of the efforts that are being made. So, we're starting to, again, see those numbers that are starting to come through, so we're starting to make an impact on that area. The last thing I wanted to bring to council's attention is that we're going to be receiving some new members. We already have received one new member, Corporal Northeast from Terrace, B.C. So, he's now installed in a detachment and is one of our supervisors there. We also have a new cadet coming as of June 1. His name is Sean Felker, and he's out of Kamloops, B.C. And we also have another GIS member who's coming to replace one of our members that's relieving, and his name is Rodney Legay, and he's coming out of Assumption Detachment. So, we're looking forward to those additions and getting him on the street and helping with the town.
And welcome to all of them on behalf of council, and I hope we meet them socially.
Yes, yes.
Sometime soon.
Again, with that, more questions from council?
Counsel, Counselor Nato, and then Counselor Fredrickson.
Morning, Malcolm. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I just had a question in terms of what qualifies as a false alarm, just for people, if the paper picks that up or the radio station, what qualifies under that? It's not necessarily that people are calling 911. It's just to clarify that for information?
No. False alarms tend to be calls for service where people have alarm systems installed in either residences or businesses. And the great difficulty that we find with alarm calls in particular is that we go to these either businesses or residences, and usually there's no one home. There's no way to check if there's been any entry except if it's fairly obvious. And then usually the, not always, but a great deal of the time, we find that there's no listed key holder or else it's not current. So, we're not able to have them come and check to verify for us. And so, sometimes what's not reflected in these numbers is that we get break-and-enter calls after the fact because someone maybe had an extra key cut or whatever the case, something that wouldn't be obvious to us going to the residence, whereas it might be obvious to the person who's in charge of that particular property. So, that's what a false alarm would mean, if it's deemed to be something that's not an actual real entry into place.
All right. Counselor Fredrickson.
Thank you for your report there, Malcolm. I was just wondering if with the downward trends in theft and such, has there been increased engagement or feedback from, or tips from community members?
I haven't seen anything that would indicate that. I mean, again, I'll say it to you, and I've said to everyone that since I've gotten here, is that we need the public's help. And any time that we receive information about what's going on in our community, it certainly helps us to do our job. And I can't stress enough how important that is. And it doesn't mean, you know, sometimes we get people, again, who don't think that it's important for the police to find out about this, but when we get these reports and I dive into these, part of my job is crime analysis, right? So, I look at the hotspots of where things are happening. So, as an example, when I brought forward to you guys in this last year about some of the crime trends I've seen with stolen vehicles where it's happening more often than not, those are issues that I see so I can start to formulate plans on how to deal with that. But if I don't have the sufficient numbers and locations of where things are happening, it's kind of a shot in the dark. So, and that's the premise again for things like our prolific offender checks, where we have a great deal of crime being completed by a small number of people a lot of times. And so, you'll have, say, one person who commits 10 or 15 crimes, and so it skews our numbers, but it's actually one person, and so if we're able to keep on top of that one person, whether they're on conditions or whatever, then again, that's not harassing that one person. Certainly, we have to be within the law of what we're doing, but certainly it does help us and give us the tools we need to decrease our numbers as a result.
All right. Counselor Bossert.
Good morning, Staff Sergeant. Thank you for coming in. I just want to say thank you very much to you and your detachment for the support that you've shown for our local MAT program that the community has begun. It's being hosted in the United Church and is being operated by the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Strategy Team. As that MAT program has opened, have you seen, heard, received increased number of calls or concerns about activity in the area? Has your detachment been of any aid concerning folks that have been accessing the MAT program?
When it comes to... When it comes to actual calls for service, no, we haven't seen anything. You know, I know that from the last meeting that we went to, that the MATS program has been used a couple of times. I can share from my personal experience of utilizing the MAT program for when in my previous postings where there has been one. It's a good, you know, obviously there's genuinely people out there who are going to need it, people who are in dire financial straits that have lost their homes or whatever the case, and it's a short-term temporary solution. When it comes to us, say as an example, and I'll utilize what I used at the meeting, we have a subject that we've picked up because they're not able to stay anywhere. It's minus thirty-five, but they're not drunk, they're not doing anything wrong, they don't have any sort of issues that would cause us to take them into custody. So, what do we do with this person? We can't leave them out in the public. So, that's where a program like that would be of, of great effect for us, enable, being able to have a place that's safe, allows them to be sheltered for the night, and, and they are provided food at the end of the day before they leave. So, all those things I see as good benefits for the town. However, again, there was some concerns, and those will have to be ironed out. So...
Councilor Schuler.
Thank you. I have two questions for you.
Sure.
First one actually is on, I think it's page four, under the statistical comparison.
Okay, for what month?
For April.
April.
And just under the total, under the total provincial stats, it says other provincial stats, there was a huge increase between previous years in 2015. And I'm just wondering if, if there was a reason for that, or is it just a difference in how things are being recorded?
You're looking at, under total federal, and it says other provincial stats?
Yeah, the other provincial stats, 2014, you know, showed six, and 2015 shows twenty-one.
Yeah. I, I believe, and again, the, I did see that. However, the only problem that I had with it is that it wasn't very specific as to what they were talking about. So, I could review those things and, and get a better, or get some more feedback on it. But I, I'm not going to try and snow you by saying that, well, it's this and this, because I don't really know what their criteria is. What I could do is report back to you on this and let you know. But I think the big thing here is that, yeah, I wasn't able to produce any, anything that would be able to say. Normally provincial stats are things like, besides the moving traffic, which is below that, you know, things like it could be equipment violations, or it could be different things that are actual provincial offenses. So, I'll, I'll ask, and I'll send something forward just to let you guys know, so you guys are aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one more, yeah. The, the other question, I think we may have addressed this previously, but under the false alarms, is there, you know, maybe an opportunity? I know with the fire department, we started to charge those prolific offenders of, of the false alarms, because generally, it's not, we found, at least with fire department, it wasn't just a one-time thing, it was the same people having the same false alarms a time again. Is there an opportunity to, you know, to look at doing that and start charging some of these people for, or businesses, you know, they're constantly having the same false alarm? Because I think it's made quite a difference with the fire department in reducing the numbers.
I think maybe I'll allow Tom to, because he's the one that's in charge of that.
Sure. Thank you. Just to respond in regards to that, I sent information off to our solicitor, town solicitor, and we have created a, a new bylaw, which is called the False Alarm Bylaw. And I will be bringing that to council very, very soon, within the next couple of weeks. So, we'll, we are moving ahead, and it will help the RCMP as well as the fire department and other emergency services who respond to false alarms.
I can add to that, too, that in the past, I've also done things where we've seen a tremendous amount of hits from one particular place. Usually what I'll do is I'll, I'll send a letter saying, you've had twenty false alarms within the past two months. Please either have your alarm system checked, or we will not be responding to further calls until it's, until it's dealt with. And I mean, it's, it just has to be a proper use of our resources. We can't keep going to the same place and it being, I mean, we'll respond, you know, certainly if, if it's, we hate to have to sort that out, because sometimes it very well could be a real incident. But the fact is, is that when we start to drain our resources towards one particular place and they're not doing anything about it, we have to, we have to mitigate that somehow.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Waiting patiently, we have Lynette Neiman-Nowber and Jen at the same time, or in succession? However you, however you want to do it.
I'm bringing my team up here on this side with me.
All right.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, Councilor, and guests. I'm pleased to be here today to speak of our fourth annual triathlon. It was a wonderful success this year. We had a hundred and seventy-six athletes and over sixty volunteers. So, there's tremendous support in the community for this event. I would like to thank all the volunteers who came out for this fun family event, representatives, representatives from PCN, Primary Care Network, Frankmatic High School Football Team, Rotary, and the Pembina Pipeline. We also had members from the general public who took a vested interest in this active community. The business community pulled together once again as well to ensure the race was a success. And thanks to all our corporate sponsors, platinum, bronze, silver, gold, they'll be thanked in the newspaper coming up here shortly. But I would like to take some time today to specifically thank those volunteers, the human aspect of the, the race that I wanted to bring forward to you. A special thanks goes to Farrell Wheeler, our swim coordinator. She's done this since day one. Sharon Oakey, our bike coordinator, and Vivian Fedema, the transition coordinator, have children that compete provincially. So, their resources were excellent. And lots of information for me. Karina Palawata, Palawata ran the, she was the run coordinator. Pam Balki was our race coordinator, or the route coordinator. And without the experience and expertise of these ladies, the event would not have ran so smoothly or safely. When Annette asked me to take the lead on the triathlon February nineteenth, that date is ingrained in my mind forever, I was a little worried. But when Mandy said, Lynette and I are planning the triathlon, I knew I'd be okay. With Mandy's knowledge and talent in advertising, we had our largest attendance. She also recommended that we shorten the cost route, the Kids of Steel route, to make it more accessible. And therefore, we ended up with the largest attendance in that age group, sixteen and under, or fifteen and under. Desiree Jansen was Mandy's administrative assistant during this triathlon, and she brought with her, her talent in organizing provincial events and her experience at international competitions with the Junior Lifeguard Club. So, the resources within the pool are tremendous, and the organization itself. Jeanne finally, Jeanne Teleski finally came on board, I think it was April, we were so happy to see her, and she jumped in with both feet. Her experience in events, initiative, and self-direction was an asset to the team, and she is the right choice for this organization. Jennifer Lundey, Lundey, sorry, also helped behind the scenes with her connections with our sponsors through the Omniplex. She went behind the scenes and followed through with a lot of the sponsors, so she brought in a significant amount of money there. To wrap up, I would just like to mention a thank you to the rest of my staff at the Park Valley Pool, who have been busy gearing up for the Splash Park Training and Opening this weekend, May-long weekend yet another year. Lana Holmes has taken on this task this season in her role as my Safety and Compliance Specialist. Lana has also been organizing all of our contract quotes for our shutdown coming up here at the end of August. Our goal at this shutdown is to bring Park Valley Pool into legislative standards, specifically with the pool basin, anti-entrapment devices. There's three drains in the pool basin and two in the whirlpool that need to be upgraded, as well as repairs to the pool basin, locker replacement, just keeping that facility well-maintained, clean, and safe for the community to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on the heels of that, we have Jen Lundey.
Good morning, council. I believe many of you already know who I am, but my name's Jennifer Lundey, and I have been fairly newly appointed as the Omniplex Manager. So, just to give you a little bit of background about me, I originally started with the town as a records management clerk, and then took over as administration to council, mayor, and town manager for maternity relief. That year just so happened to be our town's fiftieth anniversary, and I was given the job to plan many events throughout that year. The fiftieth year was an exciting year that I really enjoyed being given the opportunity to plan the celebrations. After the fiftieth plans, the, the approval was given to build the Mackenzie Conference Center. I was then asked to take on the role of assistant manager for the facility. It was, I was given quite a task to open up the facility in quite a timely manner, but my assistant and I managed to have it ready to go. And by the middle of December of 2008, we were able to open the doors to the Mackenzie Conference Center. Over the years, I have continued to plan many events for the town and still oversee, of which I have been proud to be a part of, and it is a passion of mine. I have also learned about the Omniplex along the way and handled events planned in the Omniplex. I've met with user groups, looked at ways to market the facility better, and worked with staff. I'm excited to take this on, this new position of the manager of the Omniplex, and I still have a lot to learn, but I'm up for the challenge. I have handled, I've handed out to council some pie charts and some tables. It shows a list of events from the 2013 to 2015, and projected events for the rest of the 2015 year in the Mackenzie Conference Center and Omniplex. It shows approximately how many people were in attendance of each event, approximately the hours of staff service required, and the number of events and types. For the 2015 year, there are two charts, one that shows what has already taken place up until April first, and the projected events that are currently booked. The numbers for all three years show some consistency for approximately the same amount of events. I do believe that even though our numbers are not quite up to the, the same as the previous year for 2015, we're still on target with hosting the same amount of events. We're not quite halfway through the year, so we can certainly anticipate more events to be booked between now and the end of the year. I think some of the good things to point out, that even though we had a roof collapse in the curling rink, and we lost some of the agricultural events such as the horse shows, our numbers remained close to what we had, what we had in 2013. In fact, in the Mackenzie Conference Center, there shows an estimation of three thousand more people walking through its doors. So, as you can see from the charts, the main use of the halls for the meetings are, are, are meetings, but a close second are social events that take place in the Mackenzie Conference Center. Our events administrator have already planned and held this year a bridal fair, which brought brides, grooms, and wedding parties from all over the province to our community. This year's bridal fashion shows showcased a bridal shop from Edmonton and dresses from a local talented dressmaker, Michelle Bossard. The show was a great success, and all the seats were filled, and people were standing to admire the dresses. Our events administrator, administrators also planned and held in March our annual staff awards evening, of which brought together a good turnout of staff to celebrate coworkers' successes. The most recent event they planned was the Administrator's Day Breakfast. This event, we are hoping to become an annual event for businesses to help celebrate their staff. The feedback we received was a positive one. Other events administrators are currently working on are the Mayor's Gala, two jingle balls, and the Town Staff Christmas Party. For those of you who are not familiar with what the jingle ball is, it's a corporate Christmas party that we host, and we do all of the decorating, the hall, the tables, provide the entertainment, dinner, bar service, et cetera. The money we raise goes back into the Mackenzie Conference Center to not only help reduce the costs of running the facility, but it also provides a service to the local small businesses with their Christmas celebration planning. Other events that our department has assisted in planning and are still assisting in planning, this past year was the zombie run, registration night, Family Day, the triathlon, Home Party Expo, Hockey Canada Tour Bus, Ball Hockey, and the Air Network, which we're partnering with Brazu County, just to name a few. The Omniplex has most recently seen a couple of new events this year, which we were quite, which were quite exciting for our community. The first one was a provincial school archery tournament. I've attached a few pictures for council in the handouts. Students from all over the province came and competed against one another. Omni One in particular was amazingly transformed into quite an archery range. It was quite impressive with all the work the organizers went to. Omni Two held a trade show for the people to purchase archery supplies. We were told that the tournament brought in nine hundred participants that weekend. The second event was a pro rodeo. Again, organizers of that event impressed us with bringing in the dirt, preparing the facility for the rodeo. They went to extensive lengths to section off the parking lot and the rodeo grounds for the participants. This, too, was a new event to our community, which brought in both cowboys and cowgirls from all over. Some of them were Canadian finalists. Both events are planning, making plans to come again next year. The archery tournament are even talking about bringing in and applying for nationals. This past year, the Mackenzie Conference Center received a new glass washer. The Mackenzie Center also was rewired with a new sound system. The new system is all run on iPads, which makes it more flexible for our staff to be anywhere in the facility to make adjustments required by the client. The system allows the staff to have more control over the lighting and sound to meet the client's requests. Both the client's choices are limited on how to set the room and set the scenes. The sound seems to be better, and clients seem to be happier. On the Omniplex side, the curling lounge roof repair was completed by mid-December, and the curling club resumed its season by the beginning of January. There have been a few follow-up items with the contractors, and they've been called back to follow up on those, and they've been completed recently. We're just waiting for the inspectors to come to give the project a last final inspection. I believe that might even be done today, I'm told. The Total Works Fitness Center's walls, all three levels received a new coat of paint, including the change rooms. Parts of the walls where the weights were resting on the walls were protected with a crosshatch sheet metal plating. The painting took place over a matter of three weeks, and we did not have to shut down the facility. We only shut down one floor at a time, so members were not inconvenienced too much with their workout schedules. The facility also received in January five new pieces of equipment, a treadmill, elliptical, rowing machine, linear hack press, and a seated calf rise. Currently, we're looking at ways to maximize the potential of the fitness center. Staff have been working together with HSG's Jeff Torita, whose background is in the fitness industry, as well as Dana Duke from Apple Fitness. Both are putting together business plans for the fitness center for us to consider. The plan shall look at personnel, equipment, use, the physical floor plan, and an operating budget. Just last week, I sent in a grant application for a new elevator for the Omniplex. The elevator that is currently there was built in March of nineteen ninety-three and is showing its age. The elevator broke down several times last year and required many repairs. Parts for the elevator are becoming obsolete. If our grant is successful, the new elevator will be retrofitted to use the current elevator shaft. The elevator is extremely important as it gets people with disabilities down to the events on the lower levels, assists parents with young children in strollers, and even acts as a freight elevator for our user groups and omni, for our Omniplex staff. We should find out within the next ninety days whether that grant is successful. And last but not least, the Omniplex staff are excited to receive the news of approval for the purchase of a, of a new ice resurfacer. Both staff and user groups have all had serious concerns with the current Olympia. This past year, the Olympia, too, was showing its age and required lots of repairs. A new ice resurfacer will be really great for the upcoming season, and with the new ice resurfacer, staff and user groups will be able to feel confident that flooding can be done in a timely manner. So, that's about it.
That's, that's quite a bit.
That's right.
You got, you've got a few things going on. Thank you very much for that report. Any questions, comments from council? Councilor Fredrickson?
I just wanted to go back to the triathlon.
I just wanted to go back to the triathlon. I was stationed there at the finish line on the triathlon, handing out medals and water and all that kind of stuff. And I just want to say congratulations to Lynette, Mandy, and Jeanne Anne, as well as to the volunteer group that really organized it. I had heard nothing but positive things at the finish line about the event. And, and you know, you guys changed things up about where the bikes are parked and all those kind of things, but it seemed like everything ran really smooth, so, given that it was February 19th or 18th when you found out. Yeah, good job.
Yeah, I echo those comments to the, to the extent of my involvement, which was really window dressing, handing out medals. It was, it was just a very supremely run event, so congratulations to you all. And Council Wheeler?
Yeah, thank you. I think I definitely echo the triathlon went overall very well, and I have been there for the last few years. And again, it was a really good success, so thank you guys for all your work, because it's a lot of work to organize that many people running in and out of buildings and around town. So, and I wanted to say also actually to Jen, I was at the pro rodeo, and the guys that were organizing said, "Your staff are wonderful." They had nothing but great things to say and how helpful they were, and if they needed something, it got right away. So, yeah, they were very impressed, so thank you.
These are, these are events that help create a, a different and much more positive image of our community, so thanks so much for all of your involvement. Anything further? All right, thank you so much. We now enter the public time section of our agenda. Normally, this is unscripted, unrehearsed, and concise. However, it might be a little more than concise, and I suspect a little more prepared, because fellow doing it knows what these meetings are about. And look who's here, Mo Hamden. So I'll invite you up, Mo, to introduce why you're here and what you'd like to present to us.
Good morning, your worship, council.
I like the sound of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be here today to speak to you about this project. Now, I've only been involved for a very short period on this when, when the Dream Valley Brazzo Outdoor Link had approached Cory about coming on board, with us to come on board and help sort of promote and marketing this. We gladly came on quickly. I mean, we just thought that it was important for Intend Fitness to get involved, because of the, us like most people in here, I think most in the community, believe strongly in having an outdoor link in this community, of course, and a fitness lifestyle. And I think it was a smart move to ask Cory, because I don't think many people can promote and talk as well as he can. He does a fantastic job. He apologizes for not being here. I think as most of you know, Monday he and his wife had a little baby boy, and I think he's at home changing diapers.
Good for him, that's awesome. Congratulations to Cory and Jeanne Anne, by the way.
Yeah, I applaud them, I'm sitting back there, thinking of them on the agenda a little bit later on. So what we wanted to do today was just give a little bit of an update on where we're at. And we have Grayson, we're here, and Mitch Miller, Mitch has a handout, and he'll be going through a little bit more of the details. It's important to update, you know, sort of budgets, timelines, and everything. I know there was some information in the paper and the letter and everything, and I think it's important to come out and give a positive spin on this, which I think is a great thing in the community. And, and just, they did a fantastic job in Facebook updating, but more needs to be done. Now, one of the most important things we want to talk about updating is the timelines as well. The plan of this committee is to have people skating this winter. So moving it up and getting real aggressive, aggressive and ambitious with the timeline. And we did that for a couple reasons. One is it was important, we thought, to create that sense of urgency. As the committee's been going and things have been moving along, it has been taking a while, and the excitement sort of goes up and down a little bit. But when we create the sense of urgency amongst the members of the committee to really get out and engage the community, and also the community, you know, gets engaged a lot quicker too. So we wanted to approach the fundraising, whether it be the corporate community, the individuals, have everybody on board to do it. I know the committee themselves will be going in front of Brazzo County Council as well to talk to them about possible involvement in this as well. I also had a chance to talk to our new MLA about this. There will be a CFEB application going in and looking to the MLA for support. Being a new MLA, he, you know, needing to understand the process, difficult for him, you know, just on that quick discussion to, to offer any type of advice going forward. But understanding that it was good for the community, he was definitely keenly interested in sitting down and seeing what he can do and what he is able to do in supporting this project. I think what I'll do now is sort of step aside a little bit, let Mitch give the handout, talk about the information that's in there, and, you know, the approach that we're looking at going in, and the possible staging of this project, so that we do it and we understand the financial commitments and do our best to make sure that we do not place any additional burden on, on town council. I think council was very generous with their $100,000 commitment to this, and it was important that, you know, appreciate that and move that along. One other thing I just want to talk about as well before Mitch begins, when I talked about the aggressiveness and moving our timeline up, probably the most important part of that was our ability to look at piggybacking on a town project. With the, when you look at the plan and the discussion and the money placed in the budget for a bus hub, my guess is, you know, you're going to want to get that work done and have it ready for the beginning of the school year. So there will be a lot of work done there, and it would be a shame for us not to get on board and take advantage of that work being done and piggyback on that and look at ways of reducing our costs. So I'll turn it over to Mitch now for a bit of discussion, and then I'll come back in a little bit more and just talk a little bit more about our ask.
Thanks, Mo. So I made this presentation kind of assuming that everybody has a lot of background information. The idea that we're trying to do and our overall mission. I still want to kind of brush up on, on, on the mission. So starting off, 200 by 85 foot playing surface with an additional 40 by 85 foot casual skating surface that's outside of the rink boards, just for somebody maybe not playing hockey. The rink boards, we'll do the 200 by 85 feet, 48 inches high, so we have the four feet high rink board systems. We really want to move forward with the players' boxes, and we want to include the chain link fence surrounding the entire rink. Still playing with some ideas in terms of snow removal and stuff, so we might pitch some ideas about having a chain link fence on just one side. Adequate lighting fixtures, which we're working with BJ Electric with full LED lighting. And we have the Zamboni tractor maintenance shed as well. One of our biggest arguments for the long-term success of this facility is the maintenance and how it's going to be upkept and so it'll be utilized. So we really want to push for the tractor maintenance shed to be there, as you'll see in our plan later. We just think it's of the utmost importance. So kind of getting into things, we wanted to show council today that the committee, we do have a very, a very realistic plan of how we can get this project started. We have timelines, we have constraints, and we'll almost be under a gun in a way to really raise money and move forward. So I've come up with two plans. This first one, Plan A, is the typical plan, probably best-case scenario. We can start by raising our $400,000 goal, waiting on, well, simultaneously waiting for the site grading plan for your bus hub, the entire park area. Once that's done, of course, we just kick off the entire project for construction on the concrete slab, ordering the outdoor board system and the tractor shed. I can't quite see it here, but we're looking at an early start date for the concrete and tractor shed, September 1st, 2015. So starting today, to that date, we'd be pushing hard for fundraising through grants, corporate donors, individuals as well. And if everything goes well, and you can see in each one of those job function boxes, I have a worst and best-case scenario for duration. At the early finish date, I can't believe that, is that September 23rd, 2015? Okay. And then worst-case scenario at the end of November there. We're still working with Annette, trying to, you know, we'd have to work in, you know, cooperation with this site grading plan. A lot of that, of course, we can't start until that's complete, and hopefully we can work closely together. And if there's a chance that we can get, you know, a focus on your bus hub or the site grading for the outdoor rink, we can maybe get an earlier start date than, than we have planned here. So scheduling Plan B, you know, everybody knows we're in tough economic times. Corporate donors aren't, you know, they can't allocate as much to donations to this as maybe a year or two ago. So, but we want to give something tangible to the community. We want to have an idea, by the end of this year, we're going to have a very nice skating surface for the community. Something tangible that they can see that, hey, this is happening. Really want to rally the community, see that this thing can happen, it can be a success. And after that, really continue to ramp up donations and fundraising, and then do the second phase, building the boards after that. So with that, I think we're still at December 10, September 23rd finish date for doing the slab, and so September 1st for commencing construction of that. So for the cost breakdown, just want to share these numbers with you. Myself and Grayson, we do a lot of this construction work, so we feel quite confident in sharing these numbers with council today. The concrete slab, that's the full rink area plus the players' boxes and the extra two and a half feet that the outdoor rink supplier recommends. Water and sewer, $20,000. You can see my note there, that's really contingent on where the water and sewer is approximated from that to the tractor shed. I really think if it is a lot closer, we can slash that down to, you know, half or $12,000. Electrical, $20,000, moving the electrical in from site to the meter at the tractor shed, and then cables to the light pedestals. Tractor shed, $32,000. This is based on a 24 by 12 tractor shed, based at $110 a square foot, so quite generous. Dashboard system, the chain link fencing for the sides and the ends, players' boxes, penalty boxes, timekeepers' boxes, benches, concrete piles, hockey goals. All of that is a quote from Canadian Arena Systems I got on Tuesday, so it's up to date. You know, they, we actually got a quote from them two years ago, and it was quite similar. So even, I'm guessing by the, you know, September or whatever, it'll be quite accurate and relevant. The subtotal of this, we took a contingency, we added eight and a half percent unforeseen expenses, just like any other kind of construction budget. So subtotal for GST, we're in that $380,000 range. I'm still working with Clayton Seeley, I'm waiting to hear back from him, how we do address the GST. I'm not sure if you guys have ideas on that, but total with GST, we're still looking at $400,000. I included the, you know, your approved manual, I know about this, just in case we need to reference it. But I really would like to get this thing going. I think it could be a really good Kickstarter for the entire park, which, you know, has a lot of support from the community. We have this on our Facebook page, and I think it attracted the most likes and comments out of, out of everything. I included a few pictures that was provided to me from Canadian Arena Systems. They built these across Alberta. They have a huge reference list, they do some stuff in Winnipeg and Ontario as well. Just so you have an idea of what we're trying to build here, we're not cutting corners. It's a first-class system, we're really taking our time. We'd rather do the extra fundraising to do this thing right. Really hoping that something like this can add a lot of character to the town, and it's something that all of us can be proud of. So on that note, that's the end of my, my part for the presentation. Just thank you for your time. Pass things off to Mo now, just to kind of end with some notes and kind of express what we're looking for helping.
Thank you, Mitch. So as I said, you know, as we're wrapping up, just talk a little bit about, about the ask. And it's clearly not a lot, because the town definitely stepped up in a big way with the commitment of the $100,000 and the plan and the works that are being there. So the asks that we have are just to make sure that there's a lot of ease in, and working together in piggybacking. So I'm not sure if the work this year was to do the grading and the site work for just the bus hub or the entire area with the pond, the walkways, and everything. And if it is great, a lot of the grading and that work will be done for the outdoor link. And again, with that work done, it helps to reduce some of those costs. Much the same can be said with the electrical, if there's lighting to the walkways. And getting the electrical and getting the grading done and getting the water sewer and everything up to the project itself reduces a lot of the costs, and being done at the same time, I don't think creates a significant burden on, on the town project. Because in fact, I would guess that a big chunk of that is probably already included, and, you know, it's just important that we work and talk together on that. One of, one of the other things that we'd like, of course, is, you know, the support on this and understanding that if it has to be staged, that it will not be the complete project up at the same time. The ice pad will be there, the shed, of course, for the Zamboni, the icy resurfacer, and at least getting that going. And the other, the other ask is, when they've been out fundraising, and as Mitch has said, right now, the, the economy has taken a bit of a hit, the things are tough. But everybody that we talked to, there's still a willingness and a desire to contribute to this thing. Where in the past, some of the businesses may have made a lump sum donation to the project, there's asks of, can we stage it over three to five years? And I know in the past, council has looked at some of these things on a one-off basis of saying, okay, if you've got that commitment over a, say, a three-year or a five-year commitment, we understand it's coming from those corporations. You know, the ability to maybe fund-end that portion or finance that portion and know that it's coming in. And as I said, I know it's been done on a one-off basis in the past, but just a willingness to look at that. And not necessarily funding the project itself. Mitch talked about the timelines and the gap to get the money, but just on the specific donations from certain larger corporations that want to stage their, their funding. So I think that's it. I don't know if I missed anything, Mitch, Grayson, if there's anything else we need to ask?
I have a question about the utility of the, of the facility. And do I understand correctly that it can be used for basketball courts in the summertime?
Yeah, there is, you know, additions that we can have. Canadian Arena Systems did provide a quote for that addition, if we do want to pour a post or have the foundation set for that, that is an option, yeah.
Any idea what, what that does to your budget?
It's, it's quite insignificant, I mean, in the $3,000 range.
Oh, okay, so modest for extended use.
Yeah, it's something to, yeah, utilize a quarter more often in all seasons, so.
Because to look at me, you wouldn't know that I'm an ardent basketball player. Not at all. But I do know that there's demand in the community, and, and it'd be nice if there were a facility that could alleviate some of that demand.
Maybe as part of the opening, we can go over some of them?
Yeah, that'd be great. You and me, yeah. Or could you get anybody taller to go? Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Any questions, concerns from council? Go to Council Frederiksen first?
Thank you for the presentation and the cost breakdown. It was really well put together. The one thing, I guess, not really questions, but, and I don't know, anybody else can chime in, but I know you talked about the staged financial contributions from businesses over one to five years. And I've seen that, working with Community Foundation, with some of the other charitable groups in the community that do do that staged. What I would like to see then, and I know Annette, you're working in conjunction with the arena committee, would be more or less just, I guess, as you guys are going out and doing your fundraising, if there's that concrete presentation, being able to come forward from administration in terms of, you know, I guess I don't want to say amount of, amount of front-ending that's being required or being asked or anything along the, I mean, obviously, right now, everything's hypothetical, because we, the fundraising component hasn't really gone forward, forward hard yet. But I would like to have just some more information on what the concrete ask would be once that fundraising is underway.
Yeah, as I said, you know, looking at sort of doing the one-offs. Yeah, as I said, you know, looking at sort of doing the one-offs clearly, when the fundraising's going on and the discussion, looking for the lump sum upfront and get it, but with some that would like to maybe look at, this is what I can do upfront as a lump sum, but if you're willing to allow me to stage, we can look at significantly larger numbers or whatever, and you're like, those numbers we don't have yet. We will go, I mean, the main push, the main desire is to get as much of it upfront as possible, to be as clean and easy with the construction of the project. But understanding the current economic situation that has come up and we just need to be aware and sensitive to it.
Councillor Annett.
I'm not going to be surprised when I talk about this one. I just want to thank you for your presentation. That's something that, when I was first elected eight years ago now, that I heard very strongly about and I've been working very hard to get it to date, so I'm very pleased about the renewed interest and passion for the project. I have no doubt with Corey and Mo behind you guys, that you'll get it done. But thank you for your passion for the project. I welcome you to the project and I look forward to working with you and getting it completed.
Thank you.
Anything further, councillor Schuler?
Thank you very much for the presentation. This is a project that I've been looking forward to having it move ahead for a number of years now. It's something that I've definitely been in support of, that, you know, we need an outdoor rink, so glad to see that you guys are starting to ramp things up and if we can, you know, piggyback on some of the work that's already planned and going to be done, you know, I think that's a great thing. So I'm looking forward to this moving forward.
Anything further, councillor Long?
Thank you. Thanks. This is actually probably more of a question for Manny. Something I've been asked a couple of times by sort of longer-term residents is that, this is very close to the location of the old outdoor rink. How can we ensure that the reasons that that one closed don't recur with this one? And I don't even know when that closed, but it's a question I've been asked a couple of times.
What I recall is, the reason it was closed, because they wanted indoor rink at that time, so. And now, we want outdoor rink.
Everything old is new again.
If I could jump in on this one a little bit, I do remember the outdoor rink as well and spent a lot of time out there skating and hockey practices. And I think that one, now, I was not on council at the time, but I do remember when it shut down and I do believe when Omni One, Omni Two, I'm sorry, was built, the outdoor rink was also built at the same time there, which is now Omni One. So it was not doing away with the outdoor rink, it was building a new outdoor rink beside the old one to kind of take advantage of it and have the icely servicer and do all that work together. That, of course, has since been covered and still, you know, small town Alberta, outdoor links are important. Council recognizes that with the donation, also recognizes the importance of the community step up to make it happen. And with this plan and having it back in this location, I think is a great idea because I remember spending many hours on that outdoor rink and our coach may just take those little wooden planks and push through the ice as that was half of our work out.
To my mind, this is very much a community-based project. I want to thank you all for your participation in it and for leading this and for coming to speak with us today about it administratively. There'll be ongoing discussions to see how we can coordinate and cooperate. So I'm sure you're shocked to hear that there's no commitment coming forth today, but we will work with, work with the committee to the greatest extent possible to make this project work for the community. This and, and I'm so glad that you're sort of promoting it with the visual representation of the proposed public space redesign in the larger parcel, because that whole effort, including this piece, is very much an effort in resiliency building within our community. If we can get people outdoors, meeting their neighbors, playing with their friends, et cetera, that is a capacity-building exercise. So thank you again for your involvement and for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm going to call a five-minute break at this point and then we'll get back at it. Thank you. We'll get underway. We'll start with the decision items in 9.0, 9.1, councillor Schuler.
Thank you, your worship. Council has directed that some changes be made to the existing council renumeration policy as amended in June 2014. Task for council's review and consideration is the newly revised policy with the following changes. Clause 14 amended from two to four weeks for the submission of reports. Clause 23 to clarify their honor area to be paid to committee or board members and Schedule A, council report template, which has been amended to include additional sections for completion. With that, I move that council approve the attached council renumeration policy C0100 as amended.
Thank you councillor Schuler. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Item 9.2, councillor Wheeler.
Thank you. Administration has received the following report from West Central Planning Agency regarding an application for a residential subdivision for the lands located at 4729 and its 49th Street. In the background, it says 47, but it's supposed to be 49th Street. West Central Planning Agency received an application to subdivide an existing residential lot into four separate lots to accommodate a fourplex. The area in which the proposed subdivision is located is classified as M3, which allows for construction of fourplex houses. West Central Planning Agency conducted a site visit on April 15th, 2015. The property is under construction. Access and parking of this property will be both from the laneway and 49th Street. The subdivision proposal was circulated as part of the process. There is an Atco gas pipeline on the property and they have no objections, but several conditions if this subdivision is approved. Drayton Valley's land use bylaw stipulates there must be two parking stalls per dwelling unit for new fourplexes. This fourplex is with the necessary parking requirements. No other comments or concerns have been received from other agencies or utilities or adjacent landowners. For reserves, given the size of the subject area, reserves are not owed as the land is less than 0.8 hectares in size pursuant to Section 663(c) of the MGA. Any land that is 0.8 hectares or less in size is not subject to municipal reserves of any nature. The proposed subdivision complies with the development plan and West Central Planning Agency recommends approving, approval subject to the conditions on the draft.
Thank you councillor Wheeler.
Yep, therefore, hold on.
We got more?
Yeah. Therefore, I move that council approve subdivision application DV1503, subject to the conditions listed.
All right. We have councillor Long?
If I can just get clarification on this, I am in the referral area for this. It doesn't affect my home in any way, I don't think so, I don't believe there's an issue with me.
Administration, do you have any recommendation in that regard? It doesn't seem to be an issue, I wouldn't think. Sorry?
It's a big referral, it's nowhere near my house. I'm in the referral area, I just wanted to make sure that's not an issue before I vote on it.
He's asking whether it presents a conflict of any kind and I don't see it.
Would he be in conflict with this?
I mean, I'm absolutely fine to step out, that doesn't...
Being in the referral area doesn't, doesn't in and of itself, this issue has come up on other matters in past councils. Being in the referral area doesn't in and of itself pose a problem. Being immediately adjacent or perhaps being more interested than the rest of the population might present an issue.
I would say in this case then that I'm not, but I would like to highlight one other thing here then.
And, sorry, just to say, what I just said is essentially encapsulating advice of our solicitors. That's not my own.
Not your personal, okay, thank you. So I believe I'm not, this is a significant distance from my house and I don't know the landowner and, I did just want to highlight something and I mentioned this to Jen a week or two back, but this, the map that I received a copy of and that we have a copy of here is virtually useless as to telling you where this development is. It's somewhere on 49th Street, between 49th Street and the lane, if you look at the copy of the map, so I don't know if we can, this comes from West Central Planning, I believe. Jen, is that correct?
Right, and I have since talked to them.
So if we can ask them in future, but I looked at this and I know where it is because they started building it, but otherwise, you don't have a clue.
Right, they had already sent out a few files that I had them open, so going forward, I've had to ask them to provide better maps for the residents so that it is more clear. So putting the address on and giving them better overall area, showing where it is, just so that you don't just get that plan and, yeah, it's not, I would be confused too if I received it in the mail and didn't know what was going on.
Councillor Schuler?
I'm, I just want to bring forward, I guess, some concern from, that I've been hearing from some of the residents, that actually, in this case, don't even live in this area, but just an overall comment, and I've heard it on numerous occasions now, that with these larger developments going in, with the size of the buildings going on the property and with the amount of parking that's having to be undertaken right on the property, that we're really changing the whole concept of the neighborhood. And, you know, really, we're going away from a family neighborhood. And I don't think that, I just wanted to bring it to council's attention because it's something that I don't think we considered when we looked at densification of this area on how, you know, adding fourplexes or, you know, even duplexes with suites in the basement, you know, with the additional parking, that really, there is no yard space for these, you know, residents and, you know, the buildings and stuff were taking up so much of the property that they're no longer family dwellings where, you know, you can get to meet your neighbors and stuff because you can't do anything outside. And it's just something that was brought to my attention by a few different people and again, no one right in the neighborhood that's opposed to this, but just as a general comment with, because we're starting to see quite a few of these coming through and it is having, it is changing what the neighborhood, you know, the whole concept of this neighborhood. So just a comment.
This is within the densification area?
It is, yes.
Yeah.
If I...
Yeah, Mr. Deal.
I think Jen's report will tell you that we're looking at land use bylaw improvements and I think at that time, maybe there will be public participation and council can look at seeing the impact of densifying because we have some densification already happened like 44th Street and see what we can do about that in the land use bylaw or parking or neighborhood issues. So I think it's a good point you bring up, but we'll bring it to our consultants so that it can be addressed during revisions.
It's a struggle, as I recall, I don't, I don't think I was on, no, I'm sure I wasn't on council at the time that the densification zone was approved, but the idea being to encourage development of more rental accommodation, it's hard to imagine how to do that without increasing the number of units. In any event, councillor Schuler's points are well taken, but perhaps in some way we can attempt to address these in, before anything further is done. Councillor Frederickson?
Jen, I was wondering, would you be able to just, so it's two parking stalls per unit and I'm looking at the second picture here, so that's two off-street parking stalls per unit then, or is that including on-street parking, or how does that look?
It's all off-street parking, so for fourplexes, our bylaw requirements are two off-street parking stalls per unit. They have to be 10 feet by 20 feet in order to accommodate a larger-sized truck. On-street parking is permitted, but it's not what we look at when we're approving any sort of development permit or rezoning application, we make sure that there is adequate off-street parking.
That answer your question? Yeah, okay. Councillor Bossert?
Thank you, your worship. I was interested to hear councillor Schuler's comments about the development in this area and how we need to balance densification and the desires of the neighborhood. So I believe, moving forward, we need to be mindful of what we allow to be built, the height of that building, the green space that is part of that development. And we did agree for densification in this area and this is exactly what's being proposed. So I think council needs to keep those points in mind. My question is that it notes in our background that the property is already under construction and I'm wondering if, what the normal process is in a subdivision request, if we do not grant a subdivision of these two lots, the property's already there, I'm not sure what the process would be. Is it not normal to ask for a subdivision before any construction begins?
The point of a subdivision for a duplex or a fourplex is for possible resale. Should council deny the subdivision, it would just mainly stay as rental properties. This way, if it's subdivided, it can give the developers the opportunity to sell each unit individually and they would have separate titles.
Creates separate titles, that's exactly the point and, yeah. And well, quite possibly, the creation of separate titles can also lend to stability of the occupants, because they're owners rather than presumably renters.
Part of my question was, is it normal process for this application to come after construction has been begun?
Yes, for numerous duplex applications that have come forward, the construction has already started, they may start off wanting to do it as a rental and then people who have approached them saying, well, I'm willing to buy a unit and then they'll apply for subdivision.
Anything further on this? All right, we have a motion before us, all in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Councillor Bossert, item 9.3, community event grant.
Thank you, your worship. Administration has received and reviewed the community event grant application from the Beehive Support Services Association, requesting support for their upcoming 40th anniversary of the organization in Drayton Valley. The Beehive Support Services Association currently services 24 disabled adults in the area with a complement of 50 staff members that provide services such as employment support program, residential support homes, respite care, supported independent living and a community access program. The grant request for the event is $4,000 to help to pay the cost of the anniversary celebration. Administration has reviewed the application and recommends that council decline the application. Although this nonprofit organization benefits the community in a substantial way, administration believes this event is a commemorative dinner to celebrate the organization itself, rather than a community event that gives back to the community as a whole. I move that council does grant... I move that council does grant the application of $500 to the Beehive Support Services in aid of their fortieth celebration, anniversary celebration.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. We have a motion, discussion on that motion, Counselor Nado.
I was just wondering if I could amend that a little bit to bump it to the full six hundred, which it looks like is the costing of the Mackenzie Center based on their budget, so that we could at least do some in-kind contribution in essence to the event so that they don't have to pay for the use of the Mackenzie Center.
Okay, that's a valid point. I'll ask administration to discuss the difference between an in-kind contribution and an actual grant. Because the question of in-kind contributions, the question arises is which department budget does it come out of? I'm gonna go to administration first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've also had the similar discussion with respect to the in-kind and the contributions. And I know that it's something that we have to bring back to the leadership team because on the spreadsheet that's been concluded, there is a column that indicates in-kind contributions and there's a column that indicates straight cash contributions. Our anticipation is that $10,000 is covering the cash contributions. However, we have to recognize that the in-kind is still an allocation of funding out of the overall budget. So just, this was just a couple of days ago, we talked about the fact that we do need to address this, make a determination and provide some recommendation to council on whether the $10,000 should only be for the cash contributions going out or whether it should also recognize the in-kind. Because at this point in time, we have approximately twelve hundred, I think it is, in in-kind, twelve or fourteen hundred in in-kind, and about seventy-two hundred in total allocations underneath the grant.
Right. Thank you. Counselor Frederickson?
I echo Counselor Nado's sentiments, however, what I was envisioning was that the $600 would come out of cash contributions to be used for the rent of the Mackenzie Center. So it's not necessarily an in-kind contribution, they're still getting a cash contribution from the event grant.
Right. Ms. Dreesen, did you have anything further you wanted to? Would that be the preferred way to go?
That would be the preferred way in this situation, yes, absolutely.
Counselor Wheeler?
Does anyone know if they're going to be charging for tickets? It doesn't say that in here and I'm just wondering if they're going to be fundraising for everyone's food or what's going on with that? They just don't have any, any revenue, I'm not sure where the revenue is coming from for this event, that's all.
No answer? No. All right, anything further on this? Sorry, Counselor Schuler, you gotta stick that up.
I was just wondering, do we have an amending motion on the floor then?
I was just about to get to that. So, what I heard from Counselor Nado was bumping Counselor Bossert's five hundred to six hundred, which in and of itself, as a grant, would be a friendly amendment. But as an in-kind contribution would not be a friendly amendment, that would have to be an amending motion. Is that, which of those two, an in-kind contribution or a cash grant?
I'm fine with a cash grant, is that, if that's how administration is easiest to proceed, so that's fine with me. It's just as long as the contribution is there.
Okay, so Counselor Bossert, do you accept Counselor Nado's request to change that five hundred to $600 as a cash grant as a friendly amendment?
I accept that generous friendly amendment.
All right, we're effusive with praise. Anything further on this? So we have Adam Secretary, we have the amended motion, Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on administration, you know, not recommending it, I think, because it is a not-for-profit and they're hosting an event like a lot of our not-for-profits do in town. And I'm not sure if this one is open to the public or not, it didn't say in here. So if it's not open to the public, then I don't know if they can be using the event's grant.
Do we have any sense of that?
As far as we, we have been advised, it is more of a private celebration. However, there was indication that the public could be invited to attend. But the general sense of this whole thing was for, a party for themselves. And that's why administration decided to go the way they did.
I think in just wrapping up that I would be along the same lines, that I think I want to see these events as much open to the public as possible. And some of the events we have chosen to put money towards have been where they've had to, you know, be for competitions or things where they're winning in, but they're still where the public can attend and be enjoying it and going on, so I think that's important to remember.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Anything further, Counselor Schuler?
Yeah, I would just have to say I agree. If it's open to the public, then I have no concerns about, you know, making the donation. But from what I read here, I, yeah, I can't, I can't say that it's open to the public and it looks more like it's a private event for their, basically for their staff and, you know, to enjoy. And if that's the case, I'm really reluctant to, you know, provide funds for a private event that, especially from, you know, from, it's an event grant for the public, so.
Is there a particular imperative in dealing with this? We have a couple of questions, which I think are apparent now. Is there any necessity of dealing with this item today? Or can it be tabled to the next council meeting? It appears, I mean, the event is in October, so. Right, so we have, I'll take a tabling motion from Counselor Schuler? Read his mind. All right, we have a motion to table and there's no discussion on motions to tables. And so, all in favor? To table it to the next council, regularly scheduled council meeting. That was carried, thank you. All right, nine point four, Counselor Frederickson?
Agenda item nine point four, Northview Park renaming request. Background, a request has been received on behalf of the Canadian Girls in Training, CGIT, for the renaming of Northview Park shown on the attached map that's in our agendas. Be renamed to Peace Park in recognition of the annual activities that the group has engaged in over the past ten years in celebration of International Peace Day. In December two thousand and fourteen, Town Council approved the addressing and naming policy. Within that policy, the naming of towns' lands is addressed by the following statement. Quote, "Names of parks and recreation areas, town-owned buildings and town-owned facilities should also reflect the theme of the subdivision where possible. Duplication of names both within the town and within the nine-one-one area shall be avoided. The intent is to eliminate mistakes or delays in dispatch of emergency services." End quote. "The current name, Northview Park, does maintain the theme of the area and is consistent with Northview Pond, Northview Crescent and Northview Gardens. However, it is possible that such similar naming could result in confusion. The town's community sustainability plan includes strategies which are compatible with the request which has been submitted by CGIT. One such strategy is to engage the community, individuals, organizations, businesses through a community development approach. The contributions of CGIT have been ongoing and demonstrate their dedication to this particular space. Letters were sent to adjacent landowners to advise of the requested name change and to provide administration with any comments or concerns that they might have. At the time of preparing this report, only one response has been received. The response was favorable and supported council's renaming of the space to Peace Park. Therefore, I move that council approve the proposed change of name for Northview Park to Peace Park."
All right, we have a motion before us, any discussion on this motion? Counselor Long and then Counselor Nado.
Thank you. I did have a conversation with an area resident who expressed, not concern, I think she's in favor of peace. But she's, she wasn't keen on the idea of having Northview Pond renamed because it's in Northview where she lives.
Not Northview Pond.
Not, well, sorry, the park renamed, because, just for consistency in the area. And I'm inclined to agree with her.
Was Counselor Nado or Counselor Bossert, who was, who was first? Okay, you go.
I think it's funny how the names that we have throughout the community for different parks. To my, there's no signage that says it's Northview Garden. So it's funny that people kind of, because nobody I know actually calls it that. We call it the dinosaur park because that's where the dinosaur play equipment is. So it's funny how different, people adopt names and what they're familiar with and then it just kind of gets carried over. I am supportive of this. We, this was brought forward to our Communities in Bloom meeting last week and the committee is in support of it as well. And I would encourage anybody to get the backgrounder on what Canadian Girls in Training does, the significance of the peace trees and the peace pole there. And it's a very beautiful ceremony. Anybody can get that information through our community profile guide with the Communities in Bloom in previous years. There's a full write-up on it. It's a beautiful ceremony and I would encourage everyone to have their support through Canadian Girls in Training. This is an excellent organization and a beautiful commemorative thing that we can do to recognize peace and multiculturalism within our communities, so I support this application.
Counselor Bossert?
I have to echo Counselor Nado's comments. When I think of the Northview Park, I think of the area where the pond is and perhaps that may be different for the people that live in that area. But the little pocket park in which we're referring to, the Northview Park, is actually quite enclosed from the rest of the area. And the highlight of that park area is the peace park or peace area that the CGIT girls have worked so hard over the years. They have planted, I believe now, seven evergreen trees. A number of them have grown beautifully and it's actually a very lovely area. I have been involved with their peace ceremony a number of times. And obviously, this group of young women, along with their leaders, have invested time, energy and devotion to this area of this small pocket park. And I think renaming it the Peace Park is in recognition of their commitment to this area and to what their work there stands for. I invite the public to come out each September and be involved in the Peace, International Peace Day and the ceremony that is held at that park because it is, it's very engaging ceremony. And I believe that this commitment to this little park is, the renaming of this little park would be very appropriate to recognize the work that has been done there.
Thank you, Counselor Bossert. Counselor Frederickson?
I'm not sure if this would be you, Shander, or not, but I was just wondering, with the letter that was noted here in the backgrounder, and I'm not sure if, my question is, is whether that letter came from a landowner or somebody affiliated with CGIT? And if there's any particulars you could give on the content of the letter itself? I'm not, I'm not sure if that's you.
The letter that I referenced in the report is actually the letter that I had sent out to the adjacent landowners. So it was sent to everybody that surrounds that park space. And I had received a phone call, a message from a lady who lives adjacent to the park and received that letter. And she was the one in support of the renaming, she and her husband.
Anything further on this item? No? Very well, we have a motion before us, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried, but not unanimously. So that's a nice twist. All right, nine point four, nine point five, for items nine point five through nine point eight, I must excuse myself as a result of pecuniary interest as defined in the Municipal Government Act. And so I will turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Schuler.
All right. Items nine point five, Counselor Nado?
Thank you. Administration has received the following report from West Central Planning Agency regarding an application for a residential subdivision for the lands located at forty-seven twelve Forty-seventh Street. West Central Planning Agency received an application to subdivide an existing residential lot into two separate lots. The intent of the subdivision is to allow for the development of a duplex to be built on the two respected lots. The area in which the proposed subdivision is located is classified as an R2 general residential district, which allows for the construction of a duplex and single detached homes. West Central Planning Agency conducted a site visit on April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. There is an old house on the property which will be demolished and built, the future duplex. Access and parking to this property will be from the laneway. The subdivision proposal was circulated as part of the planning process. ACCO Gas has no objections but several conditions if this subdivision is approved. West Central Planning Agency received one comment from an adjacent landowner which is attached. Her concerns include future parking issues because of the increase in density, traffic in the area and lower property values. The town of Drayton Valley's land use bylaws stipulates that there will be three parking stalls per dwelling unit for the new duplexes and one parking stall per secondary suite. This duplex complies with the necessary parking requirements as each dwelling unit has four parking stalls, total of eight parking stalls, on-site, planned given from baseline geometric group. No other comments or concerns have been received from other agencies or utilities or adjacent landowners. Given the size of the area, the subject area, reserves are not allowed, not owed as the land is less than point eight hectares, two acres, in size. Pursuant to section six-six-three C of the MGA, any land that is point eight hectares or less in size is not subject to municipal reserves of any nature. The proposed subdivision complies with the municipal development plan and West Central Planning Agency recommends approval subject to the listed conditions on the draft approval. Therefore, I would like to make the motion that council approve, sorry, going back, subdivision application DV fifteen zero-two, subject to the conditions noted attached.
Thank you. Comments, questions? We'll go to Ms. Frederickson first?
Jen, I was just wondering, with the parking, I'm looking at the picture here that we have, the plot plan. So you have two, it looks like verti, or like, not vertical, but you know what I'm saying, vertical parking stalls, stacked parking stalls in the back? And then would that remain that there's still street parking out front then with the subdivision?
There's no street parking anticipated for this lot as it is on a really bad corner, so all parking has to be in the back.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yeah, my question is actually related to the same. So it says that they're required to have three parking stalls, but it looks like they're gonna have four for each unit back there, but then there's actually zero backyard. Is that correct?
Aside from that strip that's running right between the stalls, that's what their backyard would be.
Yeah.
Just one little buffer strip.
But they'd be sharing that potentially because it's a, okay.
Just as clarification, there's four parking stalls in the back, right?
Four per unit, so there should be eight in total. And on the site plan, when baseline drafted up the site plan, they only wrote parking on certain ones, but it's actually those ones plus the ones beside them. So if you look at them, it's kind of, there is four per side.
Okay.
They should have wrote parking on all four of them, but they only did it on kind of kitty-corner ones.
And these dimensions are in meters?
Yes.
So they are proper length then?
Yes, they are 10 by 20.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? The only comment that I would like to make is with putting eight more stalls of parking, this laneway is a very busy laneway to start with. It is on a curve. Adding that much more is something that's going to pose a problem. In fact, I've brought forward to administration earlier the condition of that laneway and that it needs to be, some repairs need to be done, which I'm assuming will be looked at as we move forward. Nothing, as nothing has been done currently. So I have to say that putting a fourplex in there, if it was just a duplex without the additional suites, I wouldn't be as concerned, but I don't know if I can support this one.
Sorry. The development of the duplex in the zoning district is permitted, as well as the secondary suites in it. So everything does conform to the land use bylaw. And it is a permitted use, so referrals weren't required, anything like that. So this is just more so for the subdivision portion of, for them to sell off each unit.
Okay. Has this been built then?
They are currently, they've applied for their development permit and it has been approved.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Frederiksen.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. I'm just wondering too, so this is a duplex that they're asking the subdivision on, but the, like, I'm not getting with the secondary suites, does it mean that it could be used as a fourplex or?
It's still going to be a duplex, so whoever buys each side, they have the possibility of renting out the secondary suite, or they can stash their kids in the basement. It's totally up to them on what they want to do.
All right. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor? No? And opposed? None? Carried unanimously? Thank you. Move on to 9.6. Counselor Long.
Excuse me, thank you. Administration has received the following report from the West Central Planning Agency regarding an application for a residential subdivision for the lands legally described as Lot 4, Plan 8521283. West Central Planning Agency received an application to separate approximately 23 acres of land from a section of land currently 29.5 acres in size. The objective of the subdivision is to have the proposed lot further subdivided as part of the Highland Park Area Structure Plan. The subject area is located on the western boundary of the Ring Road. West Central Planning conducted a site visit April 15, 2015, to the subject area. The site analysis revealed that the area is cleared with patches of trees on what will become the remainder parcel. The subdivision proposal was circulated as part of the planning process. Comments were received from Brazzo County. West Central Planning responded to these concerns by directing county staff to the Highland Park Area Structure Plan, which would shed light on the stormwater management plan. In addition, it was also made clear to the county that the applicant does not intend on creating individual lots at this time due to recent market conditions. Therefore, such concerns should not relate to the current proposal going before council for deliberation. The land subject to subdivision has no reserves owing on it. However, upon further subdividing, municipal reserves will be dedicated as per Section 4.2.4 of the Highland Park ASP. The proposed subdivision complies with the municipal development plan and the Highland Park Area Structure Plan. Therefore, West Central Planning Agency recommends approval subject to the listed conditions below. So I will make the motion that council approve subdivision application DV 1504, subject to the conditions as noted below.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any comments or questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Frederiksen.
It's not really a question, it's just for my own clarification. So this is just basically subdividing off the, what was the existing landowner away from what would become the Highland Park area?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then, so then, within this though, there would be another subdivision that would come up where you're looking at the actual specific lots itself?
Right. When the developer is ready, then they'll come forward with a subdivision application, which will distinct, or put over, I can't speak today, which will show each individual lot for potential resale.
All right. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor? And that's approved unanimously. We'll move on to item 9.7. Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. This is for development permit DV 15051. Administration has received an application for the relocation of a local logging business from its current location at 5025 and 5037 62nd Street to 3702 62nd Street. As a part of this application, the applicant is requesting that the sleeper trailers currently on the existing site be approved for relocation to the new site. As the business owner is outgrowing its current location, the applicants are seeking to relocate the proposed 20, to a relocation, to 20-acre parcel. The sleeper trailers, if allowed, will be placed along the west side of the property where the visibility from the highway would be limited. Currently, there are 18 trailers. The applicant has stated that 15 trailers would be relocated, with the remaining three trailers being permanently removed. The purpose of the sleeper trailers is to house employees on-site, to have workers close to equipment at all times, as shifts are long and tend to fluctuate. The municipal development plan shows that the lands are subject, are intended for commercial and industrial use, as sleeper trailers, under the basis of them being a worksite accommodation, would not be contradictory to the intended land use upon consideration of existing surrounding land uses. The decision regarding the approval or refusal of this development plan should therefore be based on whether the sleeper trailers would be an appropriate use within the surrounding area. The Brazu Business Park Area Structure Plan from 2001 was drafted around a mix of agricultural, residential, commercial, industrial, and land uses. There was a farmstead located to the north of the ATK building that contained two houses, a barn, and several sheds. The land adjacent to Highway 22, 50th Avenue, and 34th Avenue are proposed to accommodate a mix of highway commercial and industrial type uses. The highway commercial district supports the commercial business industrial type uses, which are generally defined as low-impact, quasi-commercial, and industrial service uses that create no nuisance factor. An amendment to the highway commercial district is a feasible approach to accommodating the mixed use of proposed and for ensuring that development purposes meet a high standard of architectural and landscaping provisions. In looking at Figure 1, existing conditions, the lands are shown to be suited for rural industrial. Figure 2, development concept, it shows the east side of the lots intended for highway commercial and the west side intended for industrial. Land use bylaw considerations, under the annexation settlement agreement of 2011 in which this area was part of, the town of Drayton Valley must administer the Brazzo County bylaw land use that was in effect at the time of annexation. The business itself is a permitted use within the Brazzo County zoning district. However, the sleeper trailers would be considered a discretionary use under the county's R1 Rural Industrial District and council approval is required. In speaking with the inspections group, a building permit would be required for the relocation of sleeper trailers. Although a building permit is only required every five years, the relocation would require a new permit so the inspector can ensure the trailers are secured properly and meet the standards of the Alberta Building Code. The Brazu, or the fire department chief has indicated that there are no concerns with the relocation of the sleeper trailers. Also, servicing is available from the service road on the east side of the property. The applicant wishes to tie into the existing water and sewer services that are already installed within the property in order to provide water and sewer to the trailers. The town's engineer has no concerns with using the existing services. The site is located near some sour, non-sour wells, west 220 meters and north 300 meters. Pursuant to Section 11.1 of the Subdivision and Development Regulations, overnight accommodations must be a minimum of 100 meters from an active well site. As the proposed locations of the sleeper units are more than the required 100 meters, administration has no concerns. A letter was sent to adjacent landowners at the time of preparing this report. No concerns were raised regarding the relocation of the sleeper trailers. Administration recommends approving development permit DV 15051 with the conditions as noted below. Therefore, I move that council approve development permit DV 15051 with the conditions as noted for the relocation of 15 sleeper trailers as it conforms to the Brazzo County's land use bylaw.
Excellent. I think we should note in there that there are 28 conditions that were noted. Just, it is a rather large number of conditions. Do we have any questions or concerns? We'll go with Ms. Frederiksen first.
Mine actually did revolve around the conditions. I was just, my question is with regards to Lydell Logging being able to meet the recommendations as noted in, as noted from administration here. So are they able to meet all of these recommendations with regards to this?
You mean meet the conditions?
Oh, conditions.
A lot of these are standard conditions. They were also previously on the current development permit and they have been able to meet these conditions so far. So these conditions will pretty much be transferred over to the new locations that they'll just have to redo again.
Counselor Nado.
Thank you. I just, I wanted, I appreciated, Jen, your information as our last GMP. I had not concerns, but I just wanted to have some questions answered to the original structure plan, how that worked because it was Brazzo and then it took in, and we got it, and then how that worked in terms of the long-term vision for that area. And I feel much more comfortable moving forward based on the backgrounder that you've provided and given us that information, to the original intent, the long-term vision, and how that's in keeping with it. So I, I'm much more comfortable moving forward. So I thank you for the extra work that you did in making sure that my questions and concerns were addressed and it helps us in terms of forward planning for the community as a whole. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Counselor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. One of the conditions is that the, sorry, I've lost it here, that they provide the installation of appropriate fencing around the site or a tree buffer. Do we know which choice they have made, whether it's trees or a fence buffer?
There hasn't been anything fully decided on at this time. That will be something that I will work with the developers, but they did specify that they were going to be putting up some sort of screening from the highway.
Okay, so there, it's here that it needs to be at least a minimum of an eight-foot fence, wooden fence. So I hope that they adhere to that. A tree buffer, of course, would be preferable as far as beauty of the area. The other concern I had was that development permit is only issued on an annual basis, correct?
Right.
And it says that temporary trailer shall be removed from the site when the development permit expires. So if they do not renew their development permit in a timely manner, they will have to remove their trailers?
The trailers currently have been, being renewed for the last three years. So the purpose of these ones are to continually renew them every year until a more permanent solution has been made. This is only temporary. They have been applying as the date, so so far they have been really good at getting their applications in ahead of time. So it's just how happened that, it is December, so approval didn't come until January because of the Christmas holidays, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear to the public that this is a temporary work camp on an annual basis. And as our housing situation improves in our community, I hope to see that the need for this work camp will not be in front of us in two years' time.
Right.
So, but I'm glad that we have workers to put in the work camps.
Thank you. Counselor Wheeler.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say that I am in support of this. I think it's good to see businesses growing and expanding and moving forward and making spaces so that newer, smaller businesses can move in and hopefully grow and flourish. And I know they have, business has talked that this is a temporary solution. It isn't permanent and hopefully we'll see something come forward in the next couple of years, but other than that, I'm happy with it.
Counselor Frederiksen.
Yeah, when we were talking about this in our Governance and Priorities, meaning the annual permit was a concern that was brought up by several counselors. And I'm just wondering, and I know it mentions here about that this is temporary and, but that was the intent of it going in several years ago when it had first gone in. So has there been any discussions about forward movement on a permanent solution? Or will this be coming forward year after year after year?
There has been discussions with the applicant about a permanent solution. This will be coming forward for probably the next three years for renewal, but the developers have an idea of what the permanent solution is going to be.
Manny, did you want to comment on that?
Your worship, maybe it'd be good to hear from the developer, the permanent solution, what we think we're looking at, if that is something.
I think that would probably be a good idea since it was brought up, so.
Daniel Fraser, General Manager, Lydell Group.
What we've been talking about at Lydell and with the town council and administration is, well, currently, to back it up, we purchased, we're leasing this property with the option to purchase in two years. At that time, we'd like to start constructing what we call an econo lodge, a basic motel, a permanent structure, wood structure with a foundation that would help us eliminate this camp issue. So we keep the town happy by removing the camps and providing it a good temporary situation for these people that are transient that come into town to help our work situation. For those that weren't at the previous meeting, a lot of our workers come in for three or four months at a time. They're from the east coast. It's hard for them to come here and move their families for three or four months where their homes down there are only worth $30,000 or $40,000. So it's not really an option for them to come here, get an apartment for three or four months. However, some do move here. In the last three years, we've had 21 of our staff buy homes in Drayton Valley. In the last year, eight people moved here and got apartments in Drayton Valley. So we are working towards a common goal, but some of them, it takes a little longer to get them to come. And then unfortunately, when we do hire some of these people, they switch over to the tank trucks or battery operating jobs, so then we have to re-recruit people for this logging situation. So I guess we do understand these shacks have to go and it's a big concern for the community and we are committed to building this econo lodge facility. And the town, Manny has spoken to Dwayne Lydell about it and provided some guidelines. We're committed on a solution for this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Long.
Not a question. I just wanted to get my say in here quickly. I think the status quo we know is not a great situation. I think we've got something here that's a significant step in the right direction, so I'm happy to see this going.
And I want to echo that. I think this is a good example on how business can work with the town administration, you know, coming up with a permanent solution. You know, we all, we all realize that things happen where you need some, you know, temporary and, you know, we've tried to accommodate that, you know, in knowing, it's nice to see that you recognize that it is a temporary solution and you're willing to work towards a more permanent solution.
We at Lydell would like to thank the town, the residents, and the administration for working with us and having patience on this issue. And we will follow all the guidelines with this temporary situation as far as fencing, trees, fire codes, whatever it takes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bossert. And then Counselor Frederiksen, and then we're going to call a question.
Just a quick comment. Our community is going through transition, obviously, with our economic changes. I would like to thank Lydell for being a strong employer in our community and providing housing for workers that are coming out of province, to keep them here, which in turn is strengthening our local economy. I appreciate Lydell working with. I appreciate Lydell working with our administration, coming before council with options and, and trying to work together to provide long-term solutions for your employees, because your employees are very important to this community and your, your company also. So, thank you for what you're, you're doing and hopefully we can continue to support you in your efforts.
Counselor Frederiksen.
That's my final question. I know we had talked about, so, so this is a temporary thing and it sounds like when you're looking at a permanent fix, you're looking down two, three years down the road. So, and maybe Jen, you can answer this, is, has there been a concrete intention for you guys to continue working together along the way? And would, would council be updated throughout this process so that we know that it isn't just something that's talked about today and forgotten tomorrow, but that it is an ongoing process?
The council's indicated, or the administration has indicated to us that this is not going to keep getting renewed. We have to have this permanent solution. That's, that's where we're at right now. We're currently working towards that common goal.
Okay, so we have a, a motion on the floor to accept the proposal as, as presented. All in favor? And that's carried unanimously? Thank you. Move on to item 9.8, Counselor Bossert.
Had to get through all of Lydell's important information to get to where we needed to be. This is an amending bylaw of 2015-05F. It has been noted by administration that existing bylaw 2003, zero, sorry, 2013-15F contained a typographical error which caused calculation error in Schedule A. Amending bylaw 2015-05F is hereby presented for council to approve three readings today. Notice of the appro, sorry, notice of the proposed amending bylaw has been provided via newspaper advertisement as well as notices sent directly to affected landowners. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to bylaw 0, 2015-05F.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Not, all in favor? That's approved.
I move that council give second reading to bylaw 2015-05F.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? That's approved.
I move that council consider giving third and final reading to bylaw 2015-05F.
And just for, for any, anyone in the gallery or at home, when council is considering giving three readings to a bylaw, we do have to have a unanimous approval from all of council to proceed to that third reading. So, that's what we're attempting to do here. So, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor? And that's carried unanimously.
Finally, I, I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2015-05F.
Ken, any questions, comments? All in favor? And that's approved unanimously. Thank you. Would someone please grab the mayor? Counselor Frederiksen.
Agenda item appointments to the Mayor's Advisory Committee, item 9.9. So, the background is with the election of Brandy Frederiksen to the position of counselor in February 2015 by election, a Mayor's Advisory Committee Community Member-at-Large position has become vacant. Ms. Frederiksen's term was to expire October 31st, 2017. Therefore, administration has advertised for board members' applications and received applications from five individuals, including Marie Smith, David Starling, Leah Sanderson, Winston Rousseau, and Phyllis Brown. The current bylaw for the Mayor's Advisory Committee states that it is to be made up of 11 members from the town, county, the ministerial association, youth, seniors, the mayor, and the deputy mayor. This composition ensures that the opinions of the commu, of the committee are balanced, are a balanced representation of our community. Administration is recommending that one of the applicants to the Mayor's Advisory Committee be appointed to fill the current vacancy. Therefore, I move that council appoint David Starling to the Mayor's Advisory Committee effective immediately to serve for a term ending October 31st, 2017.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Nado.
Not, I was asked. Just my comment that it's wonderful to see that there are five people that apply to be on the Mayor's Advisory, but that there are current vacancies in other boards that the community has, and most notably right now, FCSS has two vacancies right now. So, I would hope that, and encourage that these applicants put their hand to other boards as them, their excellent qualifications and they'd be an asset to any of our existing boards right now.
Yeah, I completely agree and we will be sending letters out to the, the other applicants, advising them of other opportunities as well. Okay, anything further? Counselor Frederiksen.
I did speak, I, I did speak with this applicant prior to him putting in and just asking for his ability to commit to such a position when he put in. And I was, I don't want to say assured, but basically that he is able to commit for the dur, the duration of the term. Because I'm not, I wasn't sure when they put the applications in, if it actually notes how often you have to show and how long you would be for. So, prior to him putting his application, yeah, I was assured that he's able to make that commitment.
No fond reminiscences of your time on the, no, okay. Anything, Counselor Bossert.
Just a quick side note. It seems that this occurs from time to time. I also had been on the Mayor's Advisory before I became a counselor, so it seems like it's a very appropriate stepping stone for anybody that might want to be interested in becoming a counselor. The Mayor's Advisory Committee is very informative.
All right, thank you. We have a motion before us, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Nine, where are we? 9.10, Counselor Nado.
Thank you, Mayor. Administration has reviewed the current bylaws in place and in consideration of the report from Hawkins-Ep-Dumont regarding the recent audit, the following bylaws are being recommended for repeal. Bylaw 2002, adopted on February 2nd, 2000, for the guarantee of a loan between Permanent Education Society and the ETB Financial, and bylaw 98-03, adopted April 29th, 1998, for the loan from the town to the Frank Matic High School Student Services Society for the construction of the MAC Center. Administration recommends that the attached bylaw 2015-10A be given three readings today to provide for the repeal of the foregoing. Therefore, I move that council give first reading to bylaw 2015-10A.
Thank you. We have a motion. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Frederiksen.
Not necessarily a discussion. I just, so I'm familiar with the one with the Permanent Education Society and the ETB Financial loan. I'm just not very familiar with the Frank Matic High School and the MAC Center loan. Was that used to assist in the construction of the MACs or was it a guarantee similar to what was put forward with Permanent Education Society?
Mr. Nado.
That loan dates back to when the MAC Center was first being built and council had given a guarantee towards the MAC Center for that, which is now no longer valid.
Anything further? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Nado.
I move that council give second reading to bylaw 2015-10A.
Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried.
I move that council consider giving third and final reading to bylaw 2015-10A.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw 2015-10A.
Any discussion? Final chance. All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. 9.11, Counselor Long.
Thank you. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities supports increased participation of women in local government. This is accomplished through education and programs that support and encourage women to get involved in local politics and leadership. FCM offers three scholarship programs. The annual FCM conference is a great opportunity to raise both awareness and funds to support these initiatives. This year, the conference is being held in Edmonton, Alberta, and the Prairie and Territories Caucus has been challenged to meet or beat the funds raised by last year's Ontario Caucus. The Prairie and Territories Caucus has challenged all towns in Alberta, including our town, to assist them with the challenge by donating $100 towards the worth, this worthwhile program. All funds donated by Alberta municipalities will be added to the fundraising campaign completed during the conference and the grand total will be announced at the conference annual general meeting, June 7th, 2015. So, I move that council approve a donation of $100 for the FCM Women in Municipal Government Fund.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Frederiksen.
It's just a question. Have, because I know our, our counselor, Counselor Nado has been very active with the, the Women in Government Program. Have any of our community members received a scholarship during the duration that the program has been?
The FCM one is a federal one.
Okay.
I, I'm involved at the provincial level for the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. So, no, we do have our Women in Government protégé program that two of our local residents previously have been a part of, Carrie Oddwell and Victoria. Yeah, Carrie and Victoria. Carrie did go on to run for council last, at last term, and Victoria went on to school with a recommendation from council for her, her participation. So, she went on to Nate, I believe, so, and she comes back every summer. So, in terms of actual scholarships, no, but as you know, the program is looking at being revamped. And I've had, I have been in conversation with the Women in Business Network locally and they've agreed to be mentors as well. So, it'll be a, and I have spoken with Jeanette Vatter as well, and she's agreed to be a participant as well in terms of being mentorship for our local girls in govern, girls not only in government, but leadership as a whole, volunteer, some business, entrepreneurship and, and leaders, and government, sorry. So, looking forward to bringing that out in the fall.
Excellent. Counselor Long.
Yeah, if I can just briefly add to what Counselor Nado said, Carrie Oddwell also, as a result of the program, served on the FCSS board and the library board. She's now left the community, but I think is still interested, yeah.
Yeah, that's great. No, it's definitely a worthwhile initiative for a small contribution. If every municipality in the Prairies region contributes, it'll be a tidy sum going towards these programs. So, we have a motion before us. Any further discussion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. 9.12, Counselor Schuler, Council Leave Policy.
Thank you. Administration has been asked to prepare a policy for council regarding leave for various reasons. Administration, it, oh, excuse me. Administration, in consultation with legal council, has prepared the attached policy for council's review and consideration. This policy reiterates the requirements of the MGA regarding absence from meetings and the requirements to request approval from council for extended absences. The policy further deals with the benefits available to counselors during a period of leave. I therefore move that council approve Council Leave Policy C0115 as attached, but with that, I would like to make a, an amendment to the attachment. And that is, on page two of it, just let me get right to the right spot here. Okay, I'd like to amend it to say, should the counselor choose to continue with his or her disability insurance or any other sudden life benefits made available by the town, the counselor may continue to receive such benefits, period. Eliminating the remainder of that sentence and the following sentence.
Very good. So, you have the motion? All right. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Bossert.
To my knowledge, counselors do not receive any disability insurance. We do have health coverage, but we do not have disability.
Can administration help us here? Because that may be a, just a redundant statement. Is there, I frankly don't know. So, administration has no comment?
I don't have to answer. I know, I know there's health benefits available, but.
But is there disability?
There's disability.
There is no disability for council members. Is that correct? Okay, so that's, the word means nothing here. So, Counselor Schuler, are you content with your motion as it is or do you, or do you want to amend it to delete the reference to disability insurance?
I would amend it to delete the reference to disability insurance.
Just for clarity?
Yeah.
So, that's, I don't, sorry, that was an amending motion. It's just, I'm getting to you. Give me a sec. There's nothing going right. So, we have an amending motion to the original motion. Any discussion on the amending motion? Are we clear on the amending motion? The amending motion is to delete the words disability insurance. We understand? Any discussion on that? Counselor Frederiksen.
I'm just, I don't know if it would be an amendment to the manager or whatever, but basically. Where, oh, sorry, where Counselor Schuler finished, by, can, it may choose to continue to receive such benefits, period. I, I don't know how, I like how it reads, by continuing to pay any monthly premiums as reviewed on a case-by-case basis, because I know we're coming from a perspective of, I'm going to be going on maternity leave and I know Counselor Bossert had leave for, you know, health reasons. But we've also had other counselors that have left or taken leave for less noble reasons. And so, I guess in giving them the power to be able to just choose and keep those benefits, I'm not really sitting right with that.
I understand what you're saying. Not entirely disagreeable either. But we have an amending motion. We have to deal with that.
I'm not sure how, yeah.
We'll deal with the amending motion and then what I'm hearing is that you would like to make an amending, a further amending motion. Because I've been up all night reading my Robert's Rules. We'll go about it this way. So, we have an amending motion to delete the words disability insurance. Any further discussion on that amending motion? All right, I'm going to call the question on the amendment, motion to amend the original motion by deleting the words disability insurance. All in favor of that? That is carried unanimously. Now, Counselor Frederiksen has an inspired amendment. By adding to the amended motion, the words after benefits?
After, oh, sorry. By continuing to pay monthly premiums, no, the counselor may choose to, oh, sorry, the counselor may continue to receive such benefits as reviewed on a, well.
As determined by council on a case-by-case basis?
On a case-by-case basis, yeah, I think I'm okay with that.
Does that sound, that sounds consistent with your intent? All right, did we get that? Very good. On this amending motion, do we have discussion? Counselor Schuler.
The, the only thing I want to make sure council is aware of then is, on each of these, you know, we're, instead of simplifying it and saying that, you know, we approve the leave and, you know, and leave it at that, we're going to have to look into each one individually and determine, you know, whether we're going to grant not only the leave, but now whether we're going to grant the benefits. but now whether we're going to grant the benefits. And, you know, my understanding of putting this together was to try to make it as simple as possible, so we don't have to review every single thing every single time and, you know, make it easier. So I don't think we've done that now. I think we've just complicated things, and I'm not in favor of that. I think if we're going to, you know, continue with the benefits, we can, it's a broad stroke for anyone, if we're granting the leave, then we shouldn't have to go through and do each one individually, whether we're going to grant the benefits or not.
Yeah.
Because that can come down to personality traits now within council. If, not saying it would happen on this council, because I don't see it happening, but we don't know future councils. And, you know, by, by doing this, it just throws a whole lot more in, and I'm not in favor of that.
Sorry, do we have another hand up? I'm going to go to Councillor Wheeler, because she did have her hand up earlier, and then I'll go to Councillor Long.
Yeah, mine was just along the lines of if, if you're concerned about it, maybe we could put some kind of a time, like it's a maximum of up to six months or a year, that they'll be covered or some kind of form. But I don't think council should be picking and choosing every time either. I agree with Dean that it's, it's a lot to be approving the leave and then approving benefits or not.
I'm going to go to Councillor Long.
I also agree with Councillor Schuler for slightly different reasons. I think what we're talking about here, that there are leaves of absence, of which I can think have involved cases before the courts. And we'd essentially be prejudging a case there by penalizing somebody who's chosen to take a leave of absence and step away while that was, that was being done. So I agree with Dean.
That would be the less noble reasons.
Yes, that would be the less noble reasons to which my colleague.
Right. Anything further?
Not on that amendment, but on the policy in the poll. So I actually do want to deal with the amendments first and then get to the whole spirit of the policy.
Yeah. So, Madam Secretary, could you read out the amendment, the amending motion of Councillor Fredrickson? Just, just the, yeah, the relevant part. You don't need to do the whole policy.
Well, what I got from it was, council may continue as determined by council on a case-by-case basis?
Sorry, council may continue, what?
As determined by council on a case-by-case basis.
I think it was continue to receive such benefits as determined by council on a case-by-case basis. Right. Do we have any more discussion on this? I think I know what you're going to say, but go ahead.
I, I don't know. I guess where I'm struggling with this too is also we did receive information from Shandra with regards to how benefits are treated with employees within the organization. And my concern is, and I, and I understand completely where you're coming from, Councillor Schuler, yes, we never, we don't know what's going to happen with other councils, and to make it more difficult for somebody to access services is not the intention. However, looking at how benefits are dealt with with employees, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I just, I, I want it to be so that we're not, we're also putting it a lot on ourselves to say, I deserve benefits or I deserve not, where the employees themselves don't get those choices, and I'm not entirely in favor of us getting that treatment while employees are not getting that same treatment as well. So I, I don't.
I think it's important to distinguish not that any, anyone in this organization is, is better placed than any other member of this organization, but under the law, we are not employees, and so we must be dealt with differently. And that is the advice of our solicitors, if I've got that right. The, the, the concern that Councillor Schuler raises, to me, is a valid one. And Councillor Long, I think, edified that by essentially saying that in other, those less noble examples of a potential councillor leave, we would be effectively prejudging, no matter how unsavory the act, we would be effectively prejudging the result, and that wouldn't be appropriate. My concern is, as I read this policy, in particular, not limited to, but in particular as it relates to maternity leaves, we have seen examples in this community and across the country where councillors have embarked upon or attempted to embark upon a maternity leave and have been abysmally treated by their fellow councillors. And it is my determination not to let that happen here. Not that that would happen here in the present day. I have every faith that it would be dealt with appropriately. But for that reason, I think Mr. Councillor Schuler and Councillor Long have raised some very compelling arguments. Is there anything further on this amending motion? All right, all in favor of the amending motion? You can, you can change your mind if you wish, but, so we have one in favor, all opposed? Right, that is defeated, so we are back to Councillor Schuler's motion. Do we have any further discussion on Councillor Schuler's motion? Councillor Naddo?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk about a little bit what you had just referred to. In my first term, within a month of being, less than a month of being elected, I found I was expecting my son. And that had never dawned on me when I, when I ran for council. And quite frankly, if I had known then what I knew now, I probably wouldn't have, no offense. I encourage you to run. But I don't, I wouldn't have made the same choices, though I'm glad I, I did. But it, as, as being a mother and being faced with the fact that you have to ask permission from your colleagues to go on maternity leave, that's a disappointing situation in today's modern world. And that's why I am in full support of this. Even as a father, that's a disappointing thing. It should never be the case that one of us has to ask permission from our councillors whether or not we retain maternity benefits. Because why would anybody do that? And this is a unique perspective in the councillor's world. But because I'm a councillor, I'm no less a human being that is deserving of a maternity leave to be with my child. And therefore, I, I welcome that this is happening and that it's inclusive and equitable across the board to any one of our councillors and to men and women thinking of running in the future and knowing that you do not have to put your family life or your family aspirations aside as an elected official. And I appreciate that this is coming forward, because I do know in past communities within this last term or so have been, well, neighboring communities have been faced with so much antagonism and hatred because they've had children and the audacity of having that while they're elected officials. And I am so proud of every, I'm going to be on a soapbox, so proud of every woman that steps forward and does, shows that women can be elected officials, can be strong leaders in the community, and still be moms, and be good at their, and be good at all of those things. So I'm proud to say that we're doing this. I'm proud to be a leader that say that we're doing this within our community, and I hope that we can show that there is leadership within other communities to do the same.
Thank you, Councillor Bossert.
Thank you, Councillor Naddo. I completely agree with your comments. I want to look at it from the other side of this policy, which speaks about the ability to continue benefits, health benefits, for a councillor who's had to take any type of medical leave. I was one of those councillors and had to take several leaves. And the ability to access my health insurance or my benefits allow me to continue to be here today, because it gave me the security and the support and the access to medical care that I needed, that I otherwise would not have been able to secure, because they were in, probably amounting into close to a million dollars at this point. We, and we do not get federal benefits such as EI or other disability benefits. So when a councillor is faced with any kind of illness that prevents them from carrying on and needing costly treatment, the access to these very wonderful health benefits, to me, has allowed me to continue in my role here. And so I'm pleased that we are, well, we're about to vote on this, but I know that for myself, it's been a great benefit, and I'm glad that we're in a position to offer that to all of our councillors, should the need arise.
Thank you. Anything further before we call the question? All in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you. 9.13, Councillor Wheeler.
It's just got 10.8 on here, I was confused for a sec. Yes, I move that we, council move into camera at 12:03.
Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. And then I'll just ask, yeah, yeah.
Were you talking to me?
All right, are we good?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Wheeler?
Thank you. I move that council come out of camera at 12:50.
Thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Can I, item 10.0, the information items, 10.1 through 10.4, may I get a motion to approve those, or receive those items as information? Councillor Naddo, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? That is carried, thank you. In the interest of time and the presentation that we are looking forward to in about 10 minutes' time, I will entertain a motion to table department reports and council reports to the next regularly scheduled council meeting, unless and until, unless there is something urgent that administration requires to bring to our attention. Seeing nothing. Okay, which one? Councillor Long is prepared to make that motion. Did you catch that? Yeah, okay, very good. And since that is a tabling motion, no discussion, all in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, and the meeting, yeah, sorry. Councillor Schuler makes a motion to adjourn. All in favor? That is carried. Meeting's adjourned.